Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield. Uh, Dr. Michigan is on Monday, November 28th. It's December time. We're still in section four point two in the city charter. Madam President, please call it all.
Thank you, Mr. Skyler.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Land.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Ms. Seymour.
Yes.
And Ms. George, your bathroom this evening. You have six members.
Thank you. Would you please try to answer the questions if you can?
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic or which is claimed. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, first, I would like to have a presentation on the Oakland Award to the City of Southfield. Who is Pamela?
My name is Ryan Divinock, and I work for Oakland County Planning and Economic Development Services under the leadership of El Brooks Patterson. And I'm here to, to present and recognize the City of Southfield for our green infrastructure, our Oakland Award, which represents our green, green infrastructure award. Green infrastructure is, can be termed in simplest terms, used to describe connected open spaces and natural areas. And the City of Southfield was recognized at this year's Green Infrastructure Celebration, which was our third annual event that was held on October 6th, 2011. Mary Carlock, the city landscape architect and art planner, was on hand to accept the award for the city. The Oakland Award is designed to be passed year to year to recipients, from one recipient to the next. Award recipients have made outstanding contributions and demonstrated successful efforts towards the planning, promotion, design, development, or support of green infrastructure in our county. Some of the highlights for the City of Southfield include, the city has over 780 acres of parkland and open spaces at thirty-three sites throughout the city, and that includes 333 acres of dedicated nature preserves. Southfield is also a partner of our, of our office for the Roots Green Core, our urban habitat conservation and stewardship project. And in 2010, Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve won a park design award from the Michigan Recreation and Parks Association. So what I'd like to do is pass out a few items. One is the press release that was issued on October 14th that describes Southfield receiving the award. Also, some slides from a PowerPoint presentation that was given during the event that explains what the award is. And also, our green infrastructure poster, which has a more in-depth explanation of what green infrastructure is.
Before you do that, I want to call Mary Carlock up here. I didn't see her back there. Mary, please come up and receive this new award. (inaudible). I'd like to say something today.
Just to formally present the city with the Oakland Award.
And it's a traveling award, is that correct?
That's correct.
It travels one year here and then will...
That's right. This was the third annual event. The first recipient was the City of Millheim, 2009. The Southfield Township received the award last year.
Thank you.
No, sorry. Southfield Township received the award last year of the City of Southfield.
All right. I think that concerns around the clock.
(applause).
Thank you very much. Mary, are you going to take charge of that, or are you going to post it out for someone?
Well, I'll probably explain it in the Parks and Recreation lobby. It's made from, not oak, but M.O. ash, or a tree that died from M.O. ash of natural causes. So totally, thanks for that.
Good. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much. That's a very, very, very appreciated award. We have no appointments this evening. We have the minutes of the whole meeting September 19th, and the whole meeting until the 3rd. Is there a motion?
No, the protocol of the minutes of September 19th and October 3rd.
Your board.
Motion, members of Skyler's, before I need to phrase your own input.
Aye.
About motion necessary. Next, we have communication. First, before we can, before we start, I do have something I have to, I have to announce. We'll get to that. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to remind the members of the public who are right here tonight, that it is important that our meeting proceed without any unnecessary interruptions. So I would ask that, number one, if you have a cell phone, that you turn it off, and that there are not be any audible comments or conversation unless you are recognized to address the council regarding an item on the agenda. The city attorney has informed me that any action that disturbs a council meeting can be considered a violation of state law and city ordinance, and the person who causes a disturbance can be required to leave the meeting. So let me sum up simply by saying that the council and mayor would appreciate everyone using common courtesy tonight and allowing our meeting to be held in a businesslike manner. Thank you. The first request for recommendation is Ms. Pamela Gerald. One moment, let me turn my cell phone off, please. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southville issue 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-3529188. And if you could, Madam Chair, I'd like to get the state law number that speaks to what you said, and also the city ordinance that speaks to what you said through the city attorney. And I'm glad that he's in the answering question mode, because I'd like to ask a question either to the city administrator or the city attorney through the chair. Okay? This is not, this is not a dialogue. This is your opportunity to address the public. Pamela, go ahead.
So is it a new protocol now for a city council, that when you ask a question, you don't get an answer, or?
Well, you may not get, you may not get an answer at this meeting.
Or are you just allowing the residents just to say something and no answer, and proceed as usual?
Proceed as usual.
Okay. That's good to know. I just hope we stick with the newly established standard. Okay? I'd like to begin. Previously, I had talked about the fact that the City of Southfield is going to be appointing a new police chief, and I have some very serious concerns along with several other residents. I'd like to, well, you said you wouldn't be answering any questions tonight, but any council member that would be willing to speak up and comment on it, it would be greatly appreciated. I wanted to know if the city administrator or our city attorney, Mr. Barry, was aware of any allegations about falsifying time records. I mean, I'm really concerned about that. And when you have a law enforcement body that's able to arrest you when you break the law, I think it's only fair that if there are allegations about law enforcement breaking the law, that those allegations be looked into, and right now, they're only allegations. And there was another allegation about the fact that a law enforcement employee took a city vehicle to use for personal purposes, like taking their child back to college. Also, too, there was another rumor, an allegation, that a gentleman applied for a gun permit, and it was denied. The city does have, and law enforcement have, they have a procedure where if you're denied, that you can appeal to whatever acting chief is over that particular action, and that is to apply for a gun permit. And I wanted to know, and I guess I can't get anyone to say for the official record, how do you define harassing and stalking? And then also, how do you define, how do you define a battery? So if you were in a public facility, and a person were to put their hands on you in an effort to move you towards the door against your will, does that constitute a battery? So if I could get our city attorney, who's very esteemed, and has been here for a long time, to either comment, if you so choose, or respond to me in writing like you requested, I would like for you to define a battery, and then assault and battery, and what constitutes harassment and stalking. I think that some of these city people, because you're not used to residents like me asking a lot of questions, coming to you to get questions and answers, and all of the stuff that you've accused me of, that you guys use that harassment and stalking very loosely. And that's a serious, serious, serious offense. And I want someone to clarify what it is. So if we're calling you as a resident about something pertaining to our city government, that does not constitute harassment and stalking in my mind. What I think it does is it guarantees a little job security, because if you don't, if you're not available to the public to answer questions, then we might as well maybe consider downsizing, getting rid of the position in an effort to cut back and save the city money. Or maybe we can have questions automatically answered. But I think you guys need to do a little bit better, be a little bit more professional, be a little bit more adult-like, and answer the public. You're not doing that. You're not allowing the people to have their First Amendment rights. And you're using this harassment and stalking too loosely. So I'm hoping Mr. New Councilor, like Mr. Jeremy Moss, that you have been watching the meetings, that you've observed some of the things that go on, and that you try to, along with some of the other people on council, and fight for the people, that you develop a real standard for this council. And I'd like to note my time up, or I'll shut my hands up. Oh, well, thank you kindly. And hello, residents. Thank you for your calls.
Mr. Ryan.
I'm going to get into this. You claim, Ms. Gerald, that nobody answers you. I am going to answer you. In reference to the chief, the acting chief, I looked into the alleged allegations that you're making about him using city property to take his kids to college and all that.
I didn't. They were, they're allegations.
You just mentioned it.
I did, there are allegations surfacing around the community.
Well, let me straighten out those allegations. I read every bit of what he said, they said, and everybody else said, and they're wrong. They are wrong. You've come up here, and you're on television now, and telling all the people about the allegations. People don't know the difference between allegations and, uh, real truth, or lies, or propaganda, or self-serving propaganda that's out there. The acting chief did not do anything wrong. Okay? He had permission to use some of the automobile, like I had when my car was stolen. I had permission to use a car from here until I can lease a car or get my car back. There's nothing wrong with that, because I paid for it. And if he used that truck, he paid for it. He allowed it. We have to have stump works here once in a while. We belong here. We work for it. We're part owners of the city, just like you are. So if you come up and say there are allegations against the chief, he's allegedly doing something wrong, it's not right? So I answered you, right? Somebody officially answered you, and I did. Now, second question you had about the police decision in reference to... What exactly did you ask about that, Ms. Gerald?
A gentleman applied for a gun permit, and he was, you want me to come back so you can hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
A gentleman applied, and this is another allegation, applying for a gun permit. He was turned down for the permit, and he was calling whoever the acting chief was, asking questions about why was he denied. There is a procedure for the City of Southfield, that if you are denied, you can appeal that denial to one of the acting chiefs. This person, I guess, from the allegation and the rumor, was attempting to do this.
What was the allegation? That they had to go to the chief?
The allegation was, when he was trying to appeal and find out why the gun permit was denied, there was an attempt by either the legal, the legal department or someone in the police department to charge this gentleman with harassment and stalking.
All right.
There was an effort to have him arrested, and the city turned down the warrant, and so did the county, so they could not issue a warrant to arrest the guy.
All right, Ms. Howard. All right, it's all me, no. All right, I didn't, you may sit down.
Thank you.
The chief has the power to do what he did. He has the authority backed up by the legal department for what he did, and he denied whatever the fellow wanted, a permit. Now, if that fellow can hire a lawyer or do something like that to find out why, he can do that. You can do that.
Okay, but you missed the part. They were attempting to arrest him.
He has the authority to deny a permit.
Yeah, but you missed one part. They were attempting to arrest him for harassment.
I'm not, I'm not going to argue the case here. You want to appeal it, give it to the attorney, and let him appeal it. But his authority is correct. So I answered you now.
Okay, but the city and the county denied the warrant.
All the people understand.
The city and the county denied the warrant that they wanted to issue for the man.
We don't want to cross.
Please, please.
Let's go on now.
All right, uh, Mrs. Karen, trying to reach here. Karen, China. It's not a serious case. Uh, Miss Stephanie English. There's one question we need to address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Stephanie English, 28735 San Carlos, Southfield, 48076. I also come before the council with respect pertaining to the police chief issue. I have emailed you guys a very detailed letter pertaining to my experiences between November the 7th and November the 9th, and receiving eleven block calls to my home. When I finally answered the phones, on one of the block calls, a person that is a police officer asked me to verify that I was Stephanie English that attended the council meeting. After verifying so, I explained in the letter with a close conversation that he advised me that there was some irregularities with time card fraud that was supposedly committed by Acting Chief Brian Gerald. I did not receive any more calls until that Friday. I immediately began to get the information as given to me, and trying to verify as many facts as possible, and actually being upset at having to be put in the middle of this. The allegations against Brian Gerald are a little deeper, where I don't feel that we as a city can do the proper investigation. I think I followed the correct processes by requesting FOIA, of who investigated, since Councilman Lance said that there was an investigation. I've learned that there's proper police procedures that we possibly cannot conduct ourselves. The Southfield Police Department does not have an Internal Affairs Division, nor does it have a police commission, meaning that any investigation of impropriety or illegality that might be conducted by any chief on that level cannot be conducted by us internally, because we don't have the proper resources. That would have to come from what I am learning from a higher authority, a state or federal agency, just based on the brevity of the situation, and how high the level of rank this person has who is under investigation. I personally am upset of actually having to come here, because I don't care who you guys selected the police chief. I really don't. My concern is the fact that officers, and these are Caucasian officers, these calls came into my home between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., which is indicative that they are either working a day shift or whatever. I hesitated. I'm not here to be pimped. I'm not here to be used as a pawn teeth. I'm not here to be used as the mouth of an organization. But when it pertains to the police department, it does give me concern. I have, want to feel as a resident that there is no impropriety in our government at all. What I'm asking respectfully through the council, I've had conversations with Mr. Sharet that I believe are very fair. I did receive one letter to my FOIA request that was not adequate, and I did contact Mr. Sharet and advise him this did not answer the questions in my FOIA. Again, from proper police procedures, that when investigations are done, and I would ask if you know all the answers, who investigated any alleged violations to the time card fraud? And there are approximately 30-plus days. This is not ours. These are days. That's when my concern became heightened. Who investigated any alleged violations? What were the findings? Who were the findings reported to? What was the result or final action? And was there any documentation included in Chief Gerald's employee file? That's critical, because if he is a prime candidate, and there was any cloud, or this was investigated, I can see where it was eliminated from his file. But if there is not really a legitimate, um, report that's done by police procedures, not just the general organizational structure, because this is very specialized, then I question as a resident, was the proper process followed for an investigation? I, and if there's any other questions, I do come back to the FOIA, but I would like my questions to be answered.
All right. Ms. Seymour, I don't know anything about your case. I know about Pamela Gerald's case, though I can't answer you until I do check it out too. Okay? I didn't know anything from what you said, or what happened. I went into what Pamela Gerald made an allegation, that's all. But you may be right. You need answers, and you will get answers, I think. Okay?
Correction. I didn't make the allegations. There were allegations in the community.
You brought the allegations forth, and I answered the allegations.
Correction, correction for the official record. Please follow the rule. Correction for the official record.
I answered the allegations.
Not Pam's allegations.
To the best of my ability, from what I know.
But not Pam's allegations. Corrections for the official record.
It's on the record.
Yes, not my allegations.
Gerald, will you please?
All right, let her go. It's time for us to do the right thing, and not just make allegations to the people that we're, we're doing bad, we're doing bad things here. We are not. And if somebody else is doing it, we will find out. And they should not do it.
All right, Miss Nuey Barnes. Please give us your name, just for the record, and you have five minutes.
Okay, my name is Nuey Barnes, and my address is 3345 Wood Creek Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 4076. And I'm here tonight for the council to address some issues representing my subdivision, Green Trees North, which is located between Cherrydale and 13 Mile Rock Creek and, um, and Evergreen. Okay, we had, I mean, we really need some assistance and a direction if we should go in. We had nine power outages in less than a year. We were out of power from one to three days. There have been thousands and thousands of dollars lost in store food. The residents at our last meeting have called DTE. We tried to arrange a meeting where they would meet with our subdivision. We have an office meeting three times a year, and we have been unable to get any assistance. And I'm here today to say that, you know, the outages are more than what we as residents can continue to deal with, and hopefully. The council can arrange or find a way that DTE will meet with us to at least explain what they're doing to eliminate the problem. And if there's a, there's, what happens is that half of the subdivision go out, and the center section of the subdivision will be on. So a lot of residents have resorted to, you know, trying to use power or borrow power from the ones that are. That's very dangerous, and we do not want to continue to do that. And we need a direction to go in, because DTE did not meet with us. We've requested, and we could never get a response.
For the, for the chair, I would like the resident to know that city council and the mayor have, have absolute concerns about the fragile nature of the power grid. They have expressed them. We have a future agenda item planned to have DTE here. We've had them here for other issues, okay, but not for this specific issue. And we have other concerns that have been added to the agenda with regard to tree trimming and some other. But the power grid and the fragile nature in these power outages are a problem. You're absolutely correct. We're hoping for December 5th, but that may not be possible, but it will be soon. It will be on council agenda, and the neighborhood can attend. Any, any resident can, can attend, or any interested party, and we'll let you know when it's scheduled.
Okay, that's going to go on the agenda?
Yes, that's right.
September or January?
That's what we're going for, yes. Probably, likely, January. We're trying for the 5th of December, but I don't have a positive answer on that yet.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time, and I would definitely, and all my neighbors will appreciate you, ever since you've given DTE to at least give us some direction that we are going in.
Thank you, Karen.
Ms. Seymour.
Hi, Jerry.
Ms. Barnes, did you have any indications whether the power outages were due to fallen trees, or substation circus, or?
All that we were told, at the last outage that we had, they called the residents and said, meet them over at Grove High School Park Mall. We went over there, and it was just a disgrace from, as who they sent to represent them. They sent a gentleman there to meet with us. He had no pen, paper, he had no answers. And I guess it was just to try and calm us down. But, you know, we're all adults, and we are not people that you can just take and, you know, we pay our bills, we're doing the right thing for citizens, and we expect that back.
The reason I'm asking is, I know that your neighborhood has a lot of mature trees.
Yes.
And all across the city, I think that DTE is far behind in trimming of tree limbs out of power lines. out of power lines. And I've had a similar experience in my neighborhood, but I see it everywhere. I just don't think they're putting the energy into clearing a line, and then we all. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Okay, I do not believe that all the trees are the whole problem.
Yeah, I don't know, but I know it's part of the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Barnes, I know you're going to your seat, I just wanted to say that we have heard this in other parts of the city, I appreciate you coming forward, said not to bother your life, everyone. I just want to add, over to our city administrators, that we've had a number of conversations with DTE, and we will continue to meet with them and get some answers. And I do appreciate you coming forward, but do know that the city administrators, the city council members, and the council take what you're saying, the mayor, I take it very seriously, and I do appreciate you coming forward, but you can communicate with us, and someone will be contacting you personally, and you know, when that meeting ends.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Ms. and Mr. Greg Keeler, Mr. Keeler here? Mr. Keeler, please give them a number, just for the record, and you have five minutes.
Greg Keeler, twenty-five, one, seven, zero, Circle Drive. I have come before you because when I was last here, I had brought up some issues that were on Circle Drive, and Jerry did come out and have somebody come out and take care of those issues, so they were taken care of. The one communication that I sent, somebody had misunderstood it. There has been excellent communication between me and Jerry about anything I brought up, even to the fact of even last time we were here, I asked him, I said, well, last year, one of my first meetings was last year when I had a tree fall in the middle of winter. Felt the snow was on top of it, it was frozen in the ground. I got a code violation, and I asked Jerry, I said, well, help me understand, why do I have a code violation for a tree that fell in my backyard and on the side of my house that nobody can see or anything else? And he said, well, someone called, but there was nobody that lived next door to me. And there's no house for another quarter mile to me, and the house is on the opposite side, and you really can't see because of trees. But he said, if anybody calls and says, there's a tree stand, we'll come out, we'll investigate, and we'll give a fine. I said, but it's in the middle of winter, and a tree is stuck in the snow and covered with snow up. You know, I would think a little bit of lenient time, because I did end up coming to court, and I actually ended up paying a four hundred fine, yeah, four hundred dollar fine if I had not cut the branches that were stuck up in the air off. And then the other thing was with the violation that I brought up last week or last month with my vehicle, is the violation said unlicensed disabled vehicle parked off road. And when I called him, that's when he told me it was a flat tire, wasn't all these other things. And so when I had the conversation with the councilwoman back and forth, by the time that me and Mayor Lawrence had our conversation, I didn't hear what Mayor Lawrence said. I thought she said, we'll be investigating and looking at you, and I'm sorry that I felt that way about you. Because the next day, when code enforcement had somebody on my street, I thought it was from my conversation, and I was just a little bit upset, so I was truly sorry. And Jerry called me and said, no, we were out there to see what you said was done. And they did come out, did it put the sign back out there, they did take care of the dirt and everything else. And me and him have been in conversation about any other problems and issues. So please accept my sorry apology, Mayor Lawrence. I did not mean that I did say that to other people, so I just wanted to say that publicly.
I forgive you, because I need forgiveness.
Thank you, Ms. George. I know our trust, our recognition from Susan Tuske. Please give your name and just for the record, and you have five minutes.
Yes, Susan Tuske, T U S K E, and my address is two one nine six five Burr Road, Southfield, Michigan. Excuse me, I'm still recovering. I'm here today because the city of Southfield is trying to condemn and demolish my house. I have been to court on this process, and I'm appealing because I was hospitalized in another court proceeding to a higher court. But I need to let people know in the city, and the people need to be aware that there's unethical behavior in the building department. I have been complaining about an outhouse that is an eyesore, that is with broken windows and open doors, that I have to pass every day on my way to the property, a garage that is collapsing next door, that is open and a danger to children, and in over a year's time, the city has done nothing about this. I've had structural engineers come out to my house and verify that my house is structurally sound, I've paid all the repair fines, and I cleaned up this property that was an unholy mess that I bought as a foreclosure, and then subsequently the people in it also demolished the interior with my doors, et cetera, the rear families that live next door, and I have a crazy neighbor that has broken windows, broken into my garage area somewhere, yes, we're trying to establish that, but I have witnesses on his breaking windows, putting logs in front of my house, stealing my mail that I'd like the police to act on. I've had the police chief apologize for their delay, and I appreciate that, but this unethical treatment of people shouldn't be allowed by the building department. I feel unnecessarily harassed, I have an eighty-year-old mother to support and myself, and there's discriminatory behavior. Is that the policy of the building department, to have every builder bring in an estimate from across town instead of being the fastest male it is? And I have a very nice African-American builder that should not be discriminated against, and I know our esteemed mayor would not allow that, but these things need to be addressed, and our building department needs to be held accountable. I had a search warrant inspection done on my property, and the house is not re-secured, I have been robbed subsequently because of that, and these are issues that should be addressed, and they need to be rectified, because I don't believe that this city condemns this type of behavior. And I'd like to know why nothing has been done about the buildings next to me, and why this building is being targeted when I'm trying to improve the city, keep the tax base up to increase the tax revenues which supports the city? This is not correct. I've talked to the mayor's office about this, he's referred me to the building department in Lansing, they are shocked at some of the behavior, they had five search warrant inspections this year alone in Southfield on the residents, and I just feel very harassed. And this should not be condemned, nor it should it be proliferating. I don't know what the council can do about this, this needs to be addressed. And the other dangerous structures, I've seen structures that are open and vacant that have been burnt, and why is my property being on a fast track to be demolished? I've had the city prosecutor's office lose documents that were delivered, which was my builder's or my structural engineering report, which caused a show cause hearing, which was more expense for my attorney. I mean, how can a city attorney deliver that to Bonnie, the city attorney, in that office, lose that document and not send it over to the assistant, Elizabeth O'Donnell? I mean, these are things that I just find highly suspect that I have never encountered. I love this city, I've always supported it, and I'm very surprised by these actions. But I hope the council can address this, but this doesn't happen to any other citizens. And if it does happen to other citizens, I wish they'd contact me on Facebook. My name is Susan Tuske.
All right, I'm going to ask our city administrator to get with you after we'll have a communication, so they can look into this and look at all these issues that we brought up. We can't answer them right now, but we do have a lot of trouble, obviously.
Well, and I mean, this could happen to you or to anyone else. And when I paid all my permits and stuff, they should have just been issued. He wanted to go back in and see if there's anything else he missed in inspection. When I made it obvious to him that I wanted to start and complete my project before the middle of winter, you know?
I understand what you're saying, but we can't solve that problem.
I understand, thank you for your time.
We will have staff contact you and find out what's going on, and if we can resolve this.
Well, we've already gotten an order to demolish my house, it goes out of talks, but it's in clear condition for three days, and that recovery time.
In order to demolish your house, when is it effective?
On November sixteenth, Judge Susan Moisey ordered it. I am an attorney now appealing it to a higher court.
So it is an appeal?
They're either going to appeal it or go for a new trial, one of the two.
But there's no immediate danger?
Yes, there is. They have a direct immediate order to demolish, which should be stayed, you know, pending the outcome, because any day now, I could pull up and my house could be demolished. This isn't the first time I've had this happen, it's happened in another city.
Mr. Charette?
First of all, with regard to referral, if you could please come to the city clerk and confidentially give her your phone number, so we can contact you, rather than necessarily being on television for privacy, that would be appreciated. And secondly, this matter is buried in the judicial process, so we will review those pieces of the indication from the resident, but we'll also have to, you know, deal through the proper legal channels, so that, you know, we're doing the right thing here and addressing it in the appropriate manner.
It sounds like a very complex situation, but we will put our attention.
Yes, I mean, I have a structural report, and my house is structurally sound, and the city is constantly still trying to demolish it. How would you see that?
Right at this moment, we can't, you know, we can't hear anything, but we, which will be addressed.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. All right, next we have consent agenda. And this is, I think.
Consent agenda A is a request for authorization for the purchase of sixty replacement mobile data computers, which we departed vehicles, to provide warranty, efficiency, and capacity to any newer applications. This request includes the computer's mounting systems and updated warranties, and total there are twelve items involved in each installation. This process was through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Program, which provides the city the most advantageous pricing by combining our requirements with those of other public agencies throughout the region. The total national state, excuse me, total national state debt amount is two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars from Dell Marketing of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Funds provided for this purchase in the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve equipment replacement account, and this request was reviewed in detail at the November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven committee of the whole meeting. Item B is a request to approve the low debt of inland landscaping of county admissions in the amount of two hundred thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars for landscape construction services for the Dollywood Restoration Project. This project is one hundred percent federally grant funded, with no match required by the city of Southfield. It will involve wetlands restoration within the Dollywood Nature Preserve immediately west of Talbot Road and south of Old Hall. The city has been designated as the lead agency to achieve this restoration. Item C is permission to initiate the bid process for a replacement video production switcher console for City Cable fifteen. The current console is twelve years old, has received miller's repairs, and this is the appropriate time to replace it, as it has been stretched to the max. The typical useful life of this piece of equipment is nine to ten years. The purchasing agent will return to City Council with the results of the bid process to seek authority for the actual purchase. Funds are provided for this purpose in the cable television equipment replacement account.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fraser. I'm sorry, I forgot to.
I move the consent agenda A, B, and C, and Sir, Mr. Riff.
Sir Gordon.
Motion of Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Aye.
Pilled, motion is carried. We have no public hearings, we have no spec plans, council, we have an extension report of Council and Cyber.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
I move the extension report for Pittsburgh Cyber MML Annual Convention, Ray Matthews.
Sir Gordon.
Motion of Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Aye.
Pilled, motion is carried.
Madam Chairman, I move the extension report for Pittsburgh Cyber, NLC Congressional Season Expo, Phoenix Arizona.
Sir Gordon.
Motion of Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Fraser, all in favor?
Aye.
Pilled, motion is carried.
Aye.
But the record showed that Mr. Cyber was being voted. Next we come to the mayor's portion, extension report for, and we've gone along to the US Conference of Mayors' Law Leadership Meeting in Congressional Black Caucus, Washington DC, September nineteenth to the fourth.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve the extension report for Mayor Lawrence for the US Conference of Mayors' Law Leadership Meeting in Congressional Black Caucus in Washington DC.
And support?
Sir Gordon.
Support by Mr. Ross.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fraser.
Madam Chair.
We have approved it, but all in favor?
Well, maybe you want to say something?
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
There's no date on the signature and no account number on this extension report.
Is that what's, no, Chair?
Oh, it's provided.
Ille, um.
We can supply the date and the account number. As a follow-up.
I just want to make sure that he, that he's doing right.
And then I'm going to ask Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
All in, motion is carried. Madam Mayor, Mr. Fraser.
Yes. Madam Chair, and honorable members of the council. Pursuant to the charter and elected exercise, my power and my right to veto an action taken by the council, and I would like to go into detail to read that. The City Council voted to approve the process of an approval grant for the Parkinson's Aid Interpretative Center. I have exercised my right to veto this for the following reasons. The approval of the funding for the interpretive center would put additional burden on our Parkinson's department, who currently is living out a budget fund balance to fund operations for Parkinson's. The approval of this, of the interpretive center is a prime, but also requires the hiring of additional people, where we in the city have put a freeze on hiring and have not hired separate essential positions. We are in a mode in the city where we have declining revenues, and it's at the point where we not only have to project the amount of loss, we are anticipating it to continue for a minimum of three more years of declining revenue. Our property assessment is declining. We have a very limited fund, and one is our burden fund that we have for emergencies, and view the fact that we are losing revenues on so many different levels, and even the discussion of taking away our personal property tax. We are in a, in a mode and in a state in our economy and as a municipal government where we cannot predict our funds from one year to the other. We are in a reactive mode where we're, we are doing everything we can to survive. It comes a point in time when you're responsible for finding a need, where I fundamentally believe that you must take care of your needs, and you save your money until you have the ability to increase your fund for your portion of revenue. I want to say publicly for the record that I firmly believe and support the city constructing the Parkinson's Aid Interpretative Center. I think it's a wonderful project, and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to our city and to our efforts, and we will recognize the nights on the things that we do to keep the city of Southfield green, the way that we have subsides, parks, and woodlands in our city to ensure that we have green space. But we are not in a position where we can afford nor should we expend the funds at this time. You will note in the, in the detail, not included was the You will note in the, in the detail, not included was the veto of the site plan, which the site plan was activated, nor was there a veto of reducing the... Reducing the amount of funds, the percentage of the interest rate for the payback to other marked loans. So, this veto, I feel very strongly about. Strongly try to paint this as me voting against the Interpretative Center. I see this as a vote in support of our financial stability. I feel it is my responsibility as an elected official in the city to exercise my right of veto when I feel strongly, and I do feel very strongly at this time, that this project, as much as I would embrace it and love to be in the rhythm cutting of it, it should not be constructed. The cost of the employment of people to run this, the cost of utilities to operate it, the cost of the loan and paying back the money on our unwritten stress Parkinson's rec budget is not the proper thing to do now this day at this time.
Um, I, I'd like to bring something to the attention of the council based on some things that occurred from the meeting. And we had an article here in the Southfield Sun, right after Thanksgiving. It actually normally comes on Thursday, but I think it's reached people on Friday and Saturday. And the article said that the council had passed, approved the Carbon Lake Project. So, everybody in this city, I got calls congratulating us for passing this, um, Carbon Lake Nature Interpretative Center being built. Unfortunately, people didn't know that the mayor was, had vetoed it, and they're expecting that this is going to go ahead. I want to say something about the building in terms of relation to the, to the, um, Carbon Lake Nature Preserve, because I think there's a perception in the heart of some people's minds that this is not necessary and kind of an add-on or addendum to the whole project. And I just want to say for the information of the people that are watching, we will see this actually tomorrow because we don't have the ability to stop and finish that. And for people in the audience, that the Nature Interpretative Center was always a part of this program. And the funds that were given by EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, the state, all of the funds that were, all the grants that were received were given because this development of the nature preserve was part of actually to bring more people in. And without the Nature Interpretative Center, these things would not have been done. They would not have been necessary. You don't make all of those observation platforms and the fishing platform and all of these things without having the building for people to go to so they can have a rest break, you can have restrooms, you can have your children that, you know, visit the, the, besides the educa... excuse me, educational component that goes into this building. Um, and at no time were, was there any intention of having this fully staffed, which would be part-time, non-career staff, but there's some interpretation about that. But I just, I want to, I want to point that out because if this, if this building does not get built, and there's good reason to believe that if it, if it doesn't get approved very shortly, that it will not be built. And it really is insulting to the previous council who worked on this for twenty-five years and to all of, as worse than insulting to the agencies that have given money with the expectation that this would be completed. Um, I, I feel that's going to give Southfield bad news. But be that as it may, I have, um, there is, there is one, one request that I think we need to take into consideration. I would like to ask the council, because we, Ms. Jordan is out of the country and was not able to get this meeting, and this is a commitment that she has for over a year. So, she won't be back for another probably ten days. And I would like to suggest to the council that we consider this when we have a full council so that we can have perhaps more discussions about some of the issues. I do know for a fact that there's a major corporation that has not been identified that wants to participate financially in this. I personally would like to see what kind of contribution they would like to make so that we have a better idea of what, what could be a salvage fund in this project. Um, but I'm, I'm suggesting to council that we reconvene on this issue when we have a full council, and that next meeting, I believe, was the twelfth of December. Does someone would like to, um...
Mr. Question, Mr. Barris, what kind of motion is necessary on this?
Well, if you can, um...
Yes, Madam President, through the chair, Mr. Cassie. The council president did ask me today to provide procedure by which the decision on the mayor's veto could be deferred, and I provided the council president with a memo sufficient copy to give to each council member. I did provide a copy to the mayor and the city clerk. The charter has particular language, and it says, in effect, that the council can act tonight or at any adjournment of this meeting. And so, that's a term of art under Robert's Rules of Order. And therefore, in order to defer your action tonight, as the memo points out, it would take two separate motions. The first motion would be to adjourn tonight's meeting to a particular date and time. If that were to pass by a majority of the voted council, you would then postpone consideration of the mayor's veto in a second motion to the adjourned date. Again, this is only if council wishes to postpone. It's a decision of council, and it will take a majority vote to do so.
Um, thanks for, I don't think I have enough time. You wanted to ask the mayor?
I provided one of the mayor, and I provided one of the clerk. I believe I provided you with that copy for each council member.
All right.
Madam President.
Um, dear Mark.
I, I just have a question to gain a sense of, of, I guess, history and background. Uh, and I don't know if the city attorney has the answer for this or someone even on the council, to gain information. Has a mayor of veto ever been adjourned to be considered and adjourned to another meeting, or has it always been acted upon in the immediate meeting following the issuing of the veto? Might be a...
I have a lot of history.
Yeah, I'm just curious that if we've done this before, I don't, that we'd be setting a precedent, perhaps?
Well, it, it...
I, I can give a partial answer to the question. I did anticipate the question, and therefore, I haven't had an opportunity to go back.
Ah, yeah.
For all of this history since nineteen fifty-eight, I can speak for personal knowledge because I maintain a file of proceedings that I have worked on, done research on over the years. I do know that in two thousand and five, there was an issue that did compel the board council by way of a mayor of veto and consideration was postponed for the adjourned meeting. That's the only instance that I, in personal knowledge, have seen it ever happen to another town that we're, without going back, but literally only two minutes of the city council meetings.
What, what I'm, what I'm really asking is, in the interest of fairness, that we have a full council to take, before all, all members present to address this. I think there's other information that's available that I would like to have presented to find out what this other corporation has proposed. I have, um, it, it could be, it could be something significant, and it could, it could affect the, even the mayor's decision. Do you have one more question?
Yes. There are other problems in reference to this that I have, and I have not got many answers in reference to the donation that a corporation has given us on this project. We have received a donation for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the same company is coming back to us for a tax abatement. And I think that is unethical. There's an ethics problem here. And I think if we do postpone it, we will reach a decision whether I'm right or wrong. So, it would be, uh, correct to delay. I'm not against the project now, but to delay the ethics question, and that's an important question, that'll either make us or break us sometimes. So, I would suggest the delay in this until we can clear up in the city attorney and investigate the ethics problem that I have. And I think the council should also have the same problem. But, uh, I would, I would go along with postponing or delaying or whatever you want to do with it until we can clear up the ethics problem. That's my problem I have with it.
The, the company that I mentioned has nothing to do with the situation Mr. Lance has mentioned. Totally different issue. You know?
Well, it's a corporation who donated a hundred and fifty thousand.
I think they're two different corporations. I mentioned another corporation that wants to contribute, but has nothing to do with it.
Oh, that has nothing to do with it.
I'll see where this is going to go. I'll move that, that we adjourn this meeting, uh, whatever time it is, to what date?
The twelfth, the twelfth would be in the...
December twelfth.
At seven P.M. We have a motion by Mr. Frazier to adjourn when this meeting's adjourned. Adjourn to meet on the twelfth at seven P.M. Do we...
Madam Chair.
Excuse me, do we vote on this first and then the second one, or do we vote on them together?
You would vote on the first motion to establish adjourned meeting, and then you would vote separately on the second motion to postpone.
All right, good. We have a, um, motion by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Lance, uh, as well.
Yes. To, to the council, understand that there was this huge press to complete this by a certain base on the grant, which is another, and I failed to mention, another major concern here with this. One is that the grant would not be given to us unless we need a certain deadline. That this construction of the Interpretative Center would take priority over everything else because we could have to give a full court press and we would take all of our energy, majority now, to, to ensure that this, um, center would be completed at that time. To hear the council say that they're willing to take their time and build it after review, that was one of the things we talked about. Is there a way that we can give additional funding? No one could answer that. And it was this huge man's press, so we got it to now, we got it to you now, we got it to you now. And again, my issue with the way it was voted on is that this became a priority. We have outlined so many issues in Parkinson's that we need to address it. Now, things that we need in order for our existing, um, existing facilities to meet, to meet the standards that other Parkinson's buildings are meeting to ensure that we are getting the maximum revenues from movements because they're desirable and wanting to be rented. And like Mr. Lance, there was a number of questions, and there was a lot of plans or hopes, but there weren't many things solidified. And I'm glad to hear that the, um, that there is additional funding being sought. But what this does, it takes us out of that crisis, that hurry up and run, and allows the council to, and this is my opinion, I expect very good, um, madam chair. It's one I feel very strongly about. But the delay is based on the council, that's within your rights. Um, but it does take this out of that crisis mode that we were in, that we have to do it now. And we hoped everything would come. It would, it would seem that if we can get funding, if we can take this out of being a financial burden to our Parkinson's, who already have loans that they want to pay back, have infrastructure that is not functioning at the maximum capacity because they haven't been updated or invested in. Um, it would seem that that would be a more prudent and a more responsible decision.
I'd like to respond to that, Madam Mayor.
If, and please, if, if I may, I'm not trying to get into a tit for tat. This is not a personal assault on anyone's opinion. This is my feeling strongly, and I don't need anyone to respond, because I'm not saying this against anyone. But this is my feeling that I'm very casted about, and I'm here tonight making this decision, exercising my policy and all of that. And I, I respect that there are other different opinions. So, I, I, and I know you're going to, but I do not want you or anyone else to think that my feelings at this point, my opinion, and the passion that's behind it is directed at anyone personal that you have to respond to it, given I'm not directing it toward anyone.
I, I don't think that at all. I don't think that at all. What you said was that we would be putting, if we, we did have a deadline, and this does have to be completed by a certain date. You made the statement, if I heard you correctly, that we would be putting all of our energy towards this rapid building. That would be done by a firm that would be hired to do this with a owner's representative that would be the construction manager. It wouldn't involve our people, since my understanding of what you said was that it would be a big push by all of our staff, and it really wouldn't be. They would have done by people that you hired to do that. So, I, I just want to throw that out.
Well, one, gentlemen, would be, um, Parkinson's would truly be involved, and Carla and Mr. Black would have the possibility to join this project.
That would not make us, that's in time with...
But that's a gentleman's opinion. Mr. Frazier.
Madam Chair, uh, you know, let's find out if this is going to be adjourned. If not adjourned, I've got several things that I want to say. I have great respect for our mayor, but I am so close to this field, and I'm going to kind of answer all the things that the mayor had to, to bring up adverse to this city and the condition of this city, which I was embarrassed to read about. And I'm going to answer some of those things, and I want to do it publicly, please.
Madam President.
Did you want to know?
No, you've got a motion on the motion.
Okay, well, Mr. Mark.
I just seek some clarification on the motion that we're about to vote on. Uh, the heart of it is because we have an absent member who's returning in ten days, and on top of that, some corporation is going to make some sort of...
They had an affidavit that they want to contribute significantly to this project. I would like to have that information, uh, particularly help us to make, um, more informed decisions. I would think that we, uh, fairly soon, um, I'll try to find out. I mean, I, I don't, I, I was approached by, so I know, I know who the person is, but, um, I would think that we can answer that.
Just all the votes, yes, and this, but I don't really have any.
All right, all right, um. The motion is of this meeting, and this meeting adjourns, the adjourn to meet on December twelfth at seven P.M. Mr. Frazier made the motion. Mr. Lance supported it, and we have a roll call, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Liam?
Yes.
Mr. Mark?
No.
Mr. Cybert?
No.
Miss Seymour?
Yes.
Um, the motion to adjourn passed by a board of two. All right, and the next, there's been telling the...
I'll move that the meeting be postponed, uh, to December, to December twelfth, December twelfth at seven P.M.
A motion by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Lance, to adjourn. This, uh, item be adjourned for meeting for December twelfth. Um, Madam Chair, can you give a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Did you clarify?
I'm sorry.
Did you clarify that again for me, please? Because I don't think what you said, some...
I may not have started congratulating.
The motion that I made is postponed consideration for mayor's veto to be adjourned meeting set for December twelfth at seven P.M.
I, Madam President, I just seek a little bit more clarification on the two-step process that we've had here. So, we've just... that we've had here. So, we just voted to, actually, yeah, what did we just, we just voted to adjourn.
You, you, you voted for the city charter requirement to establish an adjourned meeting, adjournment of nineteen to December twelfth. Now, the second step, to take that step, is to then postpone consideration of the mayor's view to that adjourned meeting, that is December twelfth at seven P. M.
Okay.
I'd like to, and Madam, so, uh...
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
I'd like to, uh, ask our attorney, uh, a question. Supposing the, the vote is reversed? Supposing the vote is no, uh, the majority vote, no, on the second step, um, now we've already established that we're going to hold another meeting to...
There would be no purpose then to hold the meeting, it would get nullified.
Okay, is so that makes it no.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, uh, we have, um, this is my.
In the interim, uh, I heard the president say that she has another company that is willing to donate, so, in that period of time that we adjourn, we will, we will find out.
Certainly, we'll certainly make every effort.
All right, and that will be a plus for us, and make clear up the ethics question, too.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, um, Mr. Porcassi, supported by Mr. Lance. Um, Madam Chair, would you please call it all? Thank you. Mr. Ma?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Porcassi, yes. Mr. Cyrus?
No.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed four to two. So, will we take them up at the meeting of December twelfth, Mr. Barrett? And that's going to take it on?
And I'll work with the city, this is an unusual procedure, at one you never have a cabinet on, and I'll work with the city clerk's office, make sure the agenda is prepared appropriately.
All right.
Well, in effect, you have two meetings that, you'll have your adjourned meeting that will go first, and after you conduct your business in that meeting, you'll then have your regular meetings scheduled for December twelfth.
I would add, uh, that, uh, and I didn't hear this directed, but perhaps the chair will direct, um, the attorney. But, I think that her land has a legitimate concern, uh, about this, and that, that needs to be incorporated in the postponement.
Well, he did ask for, I, I just think...
I just didn't see if the dots connect. That's all I'm saying. Is someone going to take that on?
According to the president, we, she may solve some of that problem, and she may get the donation from the other company.
I think you think that one donation is one you...
It may, we need more than one donation.
Well, we do. But, you must, I think what you're saying, Mr. Cyrus, you want the ethics issue to be drawn.
Yeah, if there's an ethics issue, let's not, uh, then go on December twelfth. Oh, well, maybe we have an ethics issue.
No, no, I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you. Mr. Barrett?
We can't postpone this forever.
Well, that's a question. Mr. Barrett?
Sure, we can.
The, the ethics issue of the donation, we'll have to talk about this in the adjourned meeting. A particular donation that he has concerned on. Can we take it up at that, maybe one more hour?
Madam Chair, the individual, the individual has given one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, as a grant to this project, and totally does something other than to give this grant. Whether you, uh, whether, what's the allegation, what's the problem? If a person comes in and, and has given a, a tax agreement, uh, because you gave one hundred and fifty thousand to this project, I think that would definitely be a conflict of interest on their part.
Well, this...
That's what I brought up.
How many of those are supposed to be? That's what it should be.
That on the donation, it's not a grant.
I have a question, Madam Chair. What is the status of the grant?
That was my next question.
Status of the grant, it's the D N C Michigan and V N R grant that we talked about. Um, it's, it's active right now. It's been extended, but the project does have to be completed by...
August first.
August first. And, uh, we've ensured that it can be.
By charter, when there is a veto, it stops the action. So, how can the grant proceed when there is a veto on the table?
Because it's a grant from the state. It's a grant from the state.
Well, I would ask to clear the case of the attorney.
Under the city charter, when the mayor filed their veto, that voided the resolutions adopted by council on November fourteenth, that authorized this project to move forward. So, it is now stated, we're vote, we cannot move forward until such time this council makes a determination whether to re-adopt those resolutions over the mayor's veto or not. If council does not, the project will obviously not get served again. If the council does re-adopt by five votes, it's the charter requires those resolutions, and in effect override mayor's veto, then the project will take it forward again. Right now, under the charter, the project is at stop from legal perspective, because your prior resolution said that the veto are currently no longer effective.
But, the grant is a debt, the grant is active, there's a state. We're not doing anything, we're not, we're not charging the work. The grant, the grant sounds like a debt.
Yeah, I, I think I made myself clear. Administration is clear that Mr. Schrempf had discussed today with the possible ramifications, we're not going to vote either way. And it's clear that administration is not allowed to move forward to implement the resolutions that were adopted on November fourteenth, until council chooses, if it wishes, to re-adopt those resolutions and override mayor's veto. Yeah, I made myself more clear.
But, to the chair also, uh, this is a reimbursement grant, so, there are no, there's no money going to be received or applied for, because, you know, we, there's, there's nothing to request at this time, so...
Yeah, best at that point. Only if the mayor's veto were overwritten, and the project went forward, and the city had spent the money to complete the project, would we be entitled to reimbursement, because it's a reimbursement grant.
You got a question, Madam? It is a reimbursement grant.
Yeah, I know, but the action that you took authorized the city to sign the grant.
What's that?
Was said that we will complete the project by August first. There was a veto of that action. That signature should be retracted. That grant should not be signed.
Madam Chair, let me ask the, uh, city attorney a question, because I think that, uh, it may be moot quite whether we go forward. And that is the letter of October twenty-fourth, uh, to, uh, Ms. Carla from, uh, Van Cordeger, where it states that, "I see both copies of the amendment, including original signatures, and return both copies to this office by November twenty-third. Uh, we will sign the copies and return fully executed document. Due for your files, please note on page two of the amendment that a resolution may not be required to execute this amendment unless required by local regulation. Due to the length of time since the award, this land no further extensions will be granted. My own reimbursement request should be submitted by August first." So, my question to you is the first, the, the, if the document was not signed on November twenty-third, uh, is that five hundred thousand dollars in jeopardy, uh, because of the veto?
I can't speak, obviously, for the state, and how they may react to the veto and the current situation. Um, I would prefer Ms. Carla, because she has, over the years, been negotiating and discussing this grant with, with the state. Would the, the state didn't say that in that letter. Will the state hold us to that deadline? Ms. Carla can comment on that. Obviously, the state has extended this grant before, more than once, and perhaps it would extend it for an additional short period of time until this veto issue is resolved.
Uh, well, the veto issue, of course, is something completely new to me in regards to the grant. Obviously, we signed the document, and it has been submitted to the state. Um, I don't think the, the, it quite stopped. If you sign it, but you don't proceed, then you don't proceed. The next step would be, uh, requesting permission to award. So, if we don't ever make that request to award, then that will stop the project at that point.
Yeah. My question, Mr. Barrett, is that, that letter had to be sent before the twenty-third.
It was...
Depending on when that was signed, it may have occurred before the mayor's veto.
Yeah, it was signed before, and...
I don't know what happened at that point, on that grant.
Uh, generally, if we don't make it to the next step, which is request to award, that would null and void our grant anyway.
Ms. Carla, this indicated that the letter was signed, except that the state filed it before the mayor's veto.
Yes.
So, so far as the state is concerned, I would assume they think project may go forward.
They're waiting for the next...
There are local considerations that can always stop a project.
The next step is, yeah, the request to award.
So, unless and until the bids are awarded, there wouldn't be another step taken in terms of grant processes.
Right, right. We don't request an award, that would disappear the grant anyway.
I think the answer is, I can't speak for the state. Right now, the state has a document that has asked that there be an extension per that letter. I would also think that if the mayor's veto is not overridden, and the project's not going to move forward, then at that point, the grant request would not move forward. There's nothing that asks the state to process at that point.
Right, because we would never ask to award a contract. You have to have permission to award, and then, you know, then you actually start the project. And they don't really show up again until you apply for your reimbursement request at the end.
Was there ever a time, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, was there ever a timeline put together to meet this August first date?
Well, we obviously met with the architect, and, you know, when that came up, and they felt that, you know, with our contract, and, um, in the contract for the contractor, whoever is awarded, they would, they would have to meet that deadline. The technical grant actually goes to the end of September, I don't have it front of me, but September, so, there's a time where you, your reimbursement request, and after a couple of months, when your agent has the inspection. So, they give you usually ninety percent, and then you pay that ten percent. Who's your final section?
I have a question I have, Madam Chair, from, from Carla. You've already spent, uh, over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, the city's money already?
That's correct.
Is that correct? Two hundred and seventy-five of the three hundred thirty-two.
Thanks.
You've already spent, and the, uh, grants that, uh, would be given to make this project go forward, would be one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which would also be lost.
Well, count combined, the architectural fee...
Yes.
Yes, that, that would all be lost.
Madam Chair, um, again, this is, this is, uh, the reason why I have put this on the table. All of them, I did not veto cycling. I did not veto the changing of the percent of the loan from the land. That's there. Architectural drawings, I don't know where this, this, this belief that if we don't build it now, it evaporates. We can build it next year, we can build it the year after that. We have a site plan. With the land is not leaving us, we own it. The only thing that is discussion that's pushing this in a state of crisis is a five hundred out of a two-point-one building. A two-point-one building is a five hundred dollar grant.
Five hundred thousand?
Five hundred thousand dollar grant, out of a two-point-one, um, building. Okay, we voted to postpone.
Madam Chair, I have, I have fingers in your hand, I'm sorry. I've got fingers here before me that, that, uh, a cadence of, uh, one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand. And, uh, the only prior act that, uh, was the, uh, the trade would be the amount that is just for the, the drives themselves. There's the money's lost.
How's it lost, Mr. Frazier?
Here's what it's, on page, the letter November fourteenth, page two, it's all still out. Twenty-one, two million one hundred thousand for the project cost, that's one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand, which went through the finance committee, its grants, donations, and previously funded items. Five hundred thousand M B N R grant, one hundred and forty thousand E P A grant, one hundred and fifty thousand donation received from Denso, and three hundred and thirty-two thousand in architectural business engineering issues, and related same costs. And of that, they've already spent two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So, two hundred and thirty-five thousand.
We got the E P A grant, we got the M B N R grant, and we got the, the five hundred thousand dollar grant.
That is the, uh, the, uh...
Where's the, the, Dr. Dennis?
There's two grants.
M B N R grant, E P A grant, and Denso are the grants that, uh, amount to, all the grants amount to one million one hundred and twenty-two thousand, excepting for the architectural piece, which the city already stepped to the seven thousand.
Um, just one more, Madam Chair, if you need.
Thank you. Uh, well, the, the sense of urgency, I understand, um, wasn't just because of the loss of the five hundred thousand dollar grant, or, you know, the, the extension thereof. There was also a timeline that the architect wanted to move forward with, and the communication from November fourteenth that we have, says the project architect indicates that this can be accomplished if the bidding process can begin immediately on November the fifteenth. So, with the now delay until the twelfth of December, can the architect meet an August first, two thousand twelve deadline anyway? Especially, I mean, I was at the meeting, uh, the C O W meeting on November the fourteenth, and he said it was going to be tight. Now, we're delaying it by another four weeks. I guess my concern is now the timeline of all of this. So, in addition to the loss of the money, if we don't complete the project, we don't get reimbursed anyways. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I have, um, um...
Madam Chair, with your permission, if it's, kind of, first of what we've done, could I direct this, Ms. Macey?
Yes, I was just going to, thank you. Um, Ms. Carla, don't go too far with the, just in case. You never know.
Gail Macey, I live on West Ten Mile in Southfield. I would be happy to supply my address to the secretary. However, now that we're going out on YouTube, I no longer want to stand up here and state my address.
No, we're fine.
A lot of people have already got it. That's a whole separate issue. We're starting with security concerns with all of this nonsense. I am concerned, and, and it appears that we're looking at a postponement, which I think is appropriate for a lot of reasons. The way this came forward, it went to a committee of the whole meeting for approval. A lot of people were not aware of that particular meeting. Um, a lot of people clearly, because of the article in the Sun, were not aware that the mayor had issued a veto. And it would appear to me that there might be a whole lot of people in the community on either side of this, who would like to have an opportunity to come forward and speak to you. So, I'm hoping that if it is postponed to twelve, twelve, that that opportunity will exist, because I think that there are also people who may have other ideas in terms of coming up with additional funding, that could take some of the sting out of some of this. And it appears to me that we lose nothing by postponing it. We lose everything if we don't postpone it. By, by postponing it, if for some reason the architects come forward and say, "We can't do it," then we still haven't lost anything, if it's postponed to, to December the twelfth. However, if it is postponed to December the twelfth, then all of this money goes away. Now, based on arguments that were made, statements that were made at the committee of the whole meeting, this grant is a kind... meeting, this grant is a kind which will never occur again. It's a five hundred thousand dollar grant, and the rules have changed. If we apply for a grant in the future, the most we could ever hope to see is three hundred thousand dollars. The, the money from Denso, whatever you decide is an ethical thing, will go away. Um, it seems to me that, that there are a lot of things, and I'm not, I'm not big on spending money, I am, you know, but I am real concerned about wasting money. And it seems to me that every step of the way, up until that last meeting, everybody was in favor of this. So the community had the impression that this was going forward. Otherwise, you know, if there had been any idea that there were some problems with it, it's entirely possible some creative minds might have come up with some other suggestions. The fact that it, it came to the very last minute, I think, is a significant problem in terms of functioning for the city. But I think that, you know, this is too big an item to just kind of let it go away. That is a lot of money we will never see again. And, you know, I've been working on this for, you know, as part of this entire process of getting Carpenter Lake as a city park to begin with for twenty years. And I can tell you that I kind of don't expect that if this, this doesn't get approved now, it will come back in, at a time when I'm still physically capable of enjoying it. So I, I really urge you to postpone it, get the answers between now and the twelfth, and go forward from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anyone else that, uh...
Susan.
Susan?
Yes.
Susan. I'm sorry. I know, I know you, but I can't...
I realize this is a non-open meeting, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, as a member of that Oakland Land Conservancy at that master garden of Michigan to Michigan State, greeting of Detroit, friends of the Rouge, working with the city of Southfield over the last ten-plus years, as well as Oakland County Water Commission, I've been involved in the Rouge Green Corridor and the acquisition of Carpenter Lake property for a very, very long time. And I was elated when I saw on the front page of paper that the council had approved the move. Uh, I was very surprised to find out it was the mayor's veto, because I know she supports these efforts, she always has, and that's one of the things I'm most proud of about you. So thank you for that, Madam Chair. And I hope there's no political agenda here that we're not aware of, uh, that will shap this, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm so emotional about this, but I hope that there's no political agenda, and there's been so many aspects of our function that will allow us not to see the completion of this project. Uh, tonight, after I heard of the veto, I contacted Sally Patrelli, friends of the Rouge, and it, although I was told that an email was sent out, most of the environmental conservation groups who were involved in the beginning do not know about this veto. And my, uh, what I would wonder is what the impact will be in terms of allocation of funds possibly. Who knows when they find out? I talked to the Conservation Environmental of the Southfield tonight, um, they didn't know anything about the veto. So there's a whole group of us out there who've been working for this for a very, very long time, who may or may not have access to additional grants once, whatever, in a short time period, who, I think, are kind of to know just what's going on. And if it's not possible, I don't know what the protocol is, if it's not possible to have a mandatory public meeting with certainly no one able to lay, at least allow us to submit information to go along our little pathway, as we do for various, and, you know, other properties, to get them to the city, to see what we can accomplish, to ask if they have that option. Thank you.
I think, I think that would be welcome, and would you, um, Susan, would you give the first, or the...
Sure. Thank you very much.
Um, I, I have some other questions, I want anyone else to want to speak to this issue. If not, so, Miss Trump.
I'm sure the mayor would be happy to hear me say this, and we don't normally agree. I think the veto at this time is most appropriate. I like what you said, Mr. Lance, that if Denso is supposed to be coming to this council to ask for a tax abatement, we should put a free pause fee line on this project until that hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation is given. I, at most of these meetings, if I am at an upcoming meeting and Denso's tax abatement just happens to be before this council, it would appear to me, as a resident, that the donation was given, preparing to give this tax abatement. It does, and I agree with you, Mr. Lance, appear like a conflict of interest. I think the mayor's concerns are very appropriate. It was a great speech, and I think the veto is appropriate. She said she wasn't against it, but the timing of it, and that's what I heard at that C O W meeting that Mr. Moss was, um, talking about. It wasn't that anyone was not in favor of the project, it is the timing of it. We have other, more pressing issues in this city besides this project, like this grant for the firefighters, two-point-two, two million, to bring back thirty-nine firefighters. We got escalated crime in this city, and we need more police officers to deal with these home invasions, these car damages, and other crimes. I am in a favor of the project, but not right now. We've got street maintenance that needs to be done. We've got other important things, like redefining some of these city departments. I agree with the mayor's veto, I think you guys should wait, I think you should put this off. If people are in support of this project, they'll give the money at any time. And to say that you're rushing because of a grant, don't you think our esteemed firefighters, the best in the country, is concerned about that two-point-two million dollar FEMA grant and the deadline of that grant? So in favor of it, would like to see it happen, but it's not important right now, it's not vital to the city, it's not going to mean life or death to the city, but escalated crime, good firefighters for these tax-abated companies and all of that, that's important. Mayor, thank you for that veto, appreciate it.
Uh, if I, just by way of explanation, the mon- the money that comes from these different departments can't be transferred into other, this wouldn't affect anything having to do with police or fire or street.
I didn't say that it was. It seems like it's an urgency, it says, it seems, I said, it seems like an urgency to deal with the deadlines of these technical grants, the donation for Denso and the other company that you were moving to. It has nothing to do with it, but the city needs to be more concerned about that two-point-two million dollar grant for our firefighters. We need more firefighters to deal with these tax-abated five, Fortune five hundred companies that we need to secure in terms of fires, and we need more police officers.
Your time is up.
And thank you for your recognition, um, Madam Chair.
All right, uh, let's see, administration, Mr. Shuret, do you have anything?
Not particular to this, uh, project, but I would like to correct an erroneous statement that's been made on several occasions about being down thirty-nine firefighters. I don't know where that number comes from. It's inaccurate, it's always been inaccurate. We are not down thirty-nine firefighters.
Anything else? Did you have anything that's separate from this issue that you want to bring up? I'm looking at the agenda. No? I'm looking at the agenda. Did you have anything else you wanted to bring up at this time?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Madam, um, I have nothing, I haven't been talking to anyone.
Oh, I'm sorry, you, Madam President, I didn't, okay. Um, I just want to say, my name is Sarah Paul, I'm actually a Detroit resident. What's the lesson? Uh, O L E, the first name is Sarah. All right, and I'm going to need you to add to this earlier, yes? Sure. Um, I just want to say I support the, uh, motion to postpone the decision. I work at the Environmental Interpretive Center at Dearborn, at U of M, and we have forty thousand kids a year come there at the full program, and anything that could help the creation of this interpretive center, you know, which includes the complement of the decisions about it, I, I support that, so I just wanted to put that on the record. The U of M interpretive center? Yeah, I think, uh, University of Michigan, Dearborn campus, it's an education and a research, uh, center for the environment, like science and environmental education. So I think over the past forty years, we've had over four hundred thousand, pay through twelve students, coming to learn there through educational programs, so, and I really love it, and I support that a lot. I go to Wing State, I'm an education major there, so one day I either hope to work at a place like that, or, uh, if I'm going to teaching, bring students to a place like that. It's a huge benefit to the community and not just the city, you know, the benefits that this provides, uh, reach beyond the city borders. So we have a lot of students coming from all over Metro Detroit to come and learn at our center. We have a family that comes out to this center, um, a family that has several children that, uh, spoke at our recent meeting, that said that she comes all the way out to Dearborn to attend your facility. And you... Thank you for, Madam President. I, I guess, sidebar.
I just want to underscore that, um, there's, to my knowledge, there's nobody at this table, and there's, um, and people that are no longer at council when this was discussed, oppose this project. We have never opposed the project, we've encouraged the project. Um, and as Mr. Fracassi, uh, in the finance committee report that he presented on, uh, November fourteenth, the dilemma is, um, now or later, um, if it's prudent to do this now. Personally, I have concerns about borrowing money from the LERF fund. I have concerns about the fund balance of parks and rags. I have concerns about, will the operation of this center really only cost seventy-five thousand? Those are my concerns, and those are legitimate concerns. I would love to see the center done, uh, maybe in the interim, we put on more, um, I hope the weekend, I'd love Carpenter Lake again. And we have signage up, that's interpretive signage, um, and I thought of several things that would be nice to add along the trail, uh, things such as would be important for last speaker, uh, the, um, water, um, stormwater management, um, and, uh, more, uh, grass on wildflowers that are bound or native plants. There are a number of posted, um, um, interpretive things along the trail. They wouldn't cost two-point-one million, however, to do those things. Um, my, my other concern is that, um, I see other needs where money needs to be spent, and, and the LERF is for capital projects. I really believe we need to take care of our own infrastructure that we've got now without adding more, um, especially because we're in a very tense time, uh, financially. Um, and personally, if I had money, I would go out, um, uh, and take that LERF money, and I would spend it on drainage at Ten Mile and Southfield, where people have to drive, um, multiple times to the year, uh, four, six, seven inches to get from the street to their house, and to drive through four, six, seven inches of water that covers their full lawn. Uh, the ditches are overflowing in Ten Mile and, and Southfield on George Washington. It's a hell of a town. Uh, it's so bad that the ducks know to come there. Um, every time I drive down George Washington, there are ducks, um, swimming there. I see other needs for this money, and, um, I, I hope that someday we build the nature center. I just don't know if we should do it right now. And, you know, for the record, on November fourteenth, I asked for a postponement with Mr., um, uh, Fraser, with that, for a full council. So, um, it's interesting that we can do that, we can postpone it tonight for somebody else, but not for Mr. Fraser, um, but anyhow.
Madam Chair.
To pronounce you.
Yeah, it, it was not the reason that we had called, because we were told, that the meeting, we had that letter just found on the twenty-third, and we had a deadline of August first, uh, two thousand, uh, twelve to meet, and we hadn't even decided then if it was in call or not known. So it wasn't, uh, it didn't include, because Mr. Fraser was just, that's, had an emergency situation, we found ourselves in.
Madam, Clark, I, what's your name? You went straight to, I went straight to, I was a man. Um, the other issue that's on the table, when we, we state the means to discuss this, the other major concern is like the one that was mentioned, and I've done my research, municipalities are not funding these, these are...
I can't tell you.
The municipalities are not funding this out of taxpayer dollars. There are partnerships, there are universities, there's other, there's counties, there's other entities, not cities taking on the responsibility of building and operating these. So with all the excitement that we have here today, and, and my records before this night, I do support this, but we are going to have to find a way to do it other than just taking our taxpayer dollars, which are shrinking every day as we, as we sit here, um, to fund them. And the way that you do that is that you have the, the project, you go out and get some funding, then you build it. You don't use the taxpayer dollars and build it, and then say, "Okay, we want someone to partner with us, we've already expended the money." So I'm excited to hear that there's other entities, but maybe the University of Michigan would want to partner with us, maybe Oakland County would want to partner with us and build this nature preserve center, um, and at Carpenter Lake, it's a beautiful place for them to partner, but we've got to find another way to do it. Uh, I also want to say for the record, and I know this isn't being brought up live, so we will have our annual tree lighting ceremony on Tuesday, November the twenty-ninth of six forty-five at the City Hall, and then we'll have our annual verb, or what we call our historic, uh, site tree lighting, which will be on Thursday, December the first at seven o'clock. Also, I would like to remind people, you know, that we, there's less not to have in snow, so your, your lead pickup, your yard waste pickup, has been extended to Friday, December the second, and if you have any questions, please contact Public Works at two four eight seven nine six four eight zero one. And we have a wonderful event to pass, and as you know, it has been declared that our military, some are active, at least, will be coming home. We will have a Army Unit three twenty-two welcome home celebration, and that will be Saturday, December the third, at eleven a.m., at our Army Reserve Center, and that's at two six four zero zero west eleven mile. And the public is welcome to welcome home our military, and that's Army Unit three two two two, and that's at our Army Reserve here in Southfield, Saturday, December the third, at eleven o'clock a.m. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Trump, can you turn?
Nothing this evening, Madam President, thank you.
Uh, first, governor, fire, home, um, we have no emergency, we have no emergency service, and no difference to come before the council, we can do this, sir.